Call the July 24th, 2019 Pickle City Schools Board of Education meeting in order. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second if there's no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we've got minutes from record retention, public hearing, and the regular meeting from June 26th. If you had a chance to review those for any additions or corrections to the minutes. If there are none, do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second if there's no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there's no report from the Career Center for this month? And there's no hearing of the public? Mr. Hiddle, treasurer's agenda.
Good evening, just a couple things. The budget has finally passed, so that's good news. What we're waiting on now is the details of what that actually ends up meaning for Pickle City Schools, as well as the rest of the state of Ohio. There is some new money potentially going to come to Pickle. The question is, what are we going to be allowed to spend it on now? And what does that end up looking like? We don't want to get into one of those situations where we had IRA funds in the past where the federal government was trying to stimulate the economy. You don't want to use that on personnel and then turn around and then it goes away because there's already a bill in the House trying to put a new funding formula in place to replace the one that we currently have. So we'll keep you updated as it goes, but just that we do actually have a budget in place now. Yes, we could potentially see more money. The question's now going to be how and what way we spend that money. So I'll be attending on August 15th. It's called the BAD meeting. I know, they're going to come up with something better, but it's the Budget Analysis and Discussion. It's in Columbus, but it's the BAD Seminar. So hopefully we'll have more information before then, but for sure at that meeting we'll get additional information. On a positive note, the International Association of School Business Officials, ASBO, asked Pickle City Schools to use our CAFER as one of their exemplars on their website for what a CAFER should look like when we go through that Certificate of Excellence process. So that was pretty cool to find that out.
Have you shared that with your staff that that's happening?
I just got that email, so I have not told them yet. But that's pretty cool stuff there. Otherwise, the only thing that's on here tonight are the fiscal reports. We did end the year in the black, as I had told you, the last meeting would be the plan. And everything's been approved by the county and we're moving forward and going through the budgeting process and getting all that stuff loaded and working forward. So are there any questions about the financial reports that you have?
On the purchase services, what is causing that to stay? Everything that's included in purchase service and why are we seeing an increase?
So there's two major factors of that. One is that we actually went into a preventative maintenance agreement on all of our HVAC components throughout the district. One of the things that we found is that if we don't maintain those, they're going to cost us more in the long run, so we made sure to put those into that program. As well as most of that expense is special education costs. Those are variable and we do not know year from year how many students that we're going to be servicing. And this happened to be one of the very high years of those expenses coming in. So things ran very warm with the Miami County ESC as well as the Montgomery County ESC. Since I've been here, we were in that almost $300,000 range at the Montgomery County ESC and we're now over half a million dollars projected for next year, just in that one component. You get into Miami County ESC and it's even more than that. So we've added more units. The high school now has two MD units. They used to only have one. Actually, I think even before that, it might have been a shared unit with the junior high. So things have just been expanding and expanding. It's nothing that we can predict. We do the best we can, but things change depending on our students and the requirements they have.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the monthly fiscal reports?
So move.
Have a second? Have a motion and a second. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Patrizio.
Yes.
Mr. Bostick.
Yes.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mrs. McMackin.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, thank you. And this is the time of the year where we normally do a food service update, so we're going to start my report with Jennifer Garland, our Director of Food Services. She's going to come up and give us an update on that department.
I just wanted to give our annual compliance reports saying that no food or beverages sold within the school district.
I'm sorry, would you mind going to the microphone just in case our viewers at home can't hear you? Thank you.
I just wanted to say that we're compliant with all of our food service in all buildings. That is with our smart snacks and the national guidelines. So at the time of the review, we are completely compliant.
Any questions for Jennifer?
No. We're adding junior high salad bar. Is that coming?
That's what we're working on.
Very good. That was a big success at the high school this year. Next, we'd like to bring up Teresa Anderson and Scott Bloom, who are going to talk to us about the curriculum department update. And they have been working a lot on, you've heard us talk about the standard-based reporting. So this is going to be a report on that and we have some samples of those report cards in front of you.
Yes, this evening you're going to be asked to approve the new report cards and progress reports for the elementary school buildings. As Mr. Thompson just mentioned, we've discussed these at several other meetings and given you some background on those. At the primary level, we are beginning to convert to the point scale instead of using letter grades, so that transition will begin this year. The intermediate buildings will be doing a combination of the point scale and letter grades for another year to two years as we transition through that building. Get used to it in the primary and then as the students move up, it'll be transitioned there. Lots of new language that is consistent with the new standards. We had some areas on the old report cards that were not even consistent with the standard language that's been approved in the last two years. So in front of you, you have just a couple samples of them, so you can see them. After approval this evening, we'll be working with the principals on rolling out plans for communicating with parents and sharing this information with them. So we have ideas for videos, bulk communications through our phone system, as well as Indian Days and conferences to start making sure parents know what's different about the report cards and what they can expect. So that is the big elementary project for right now. Other than that, just a couple things. Summer school is still going on for the elementary buildings, working with small groups for reading instruction. Careful Corners begins next week, which is our annual safety program that we do in collaboration with the Pickle Police Department. Currently, we have 26 students signed up to participate in that, so that's always a fun program coming up. Mr. Bloom and I were talking just a few minutes ago about the biggest thing we've been working on all summer is renewals of orders, purchase orders, making sure that we have all the supplies ordered and delivered and prepared for when our students arrive in August. So that's been the bulk of our work this summer.
Good evening, I just want to touch base on something that we've been working on in the vein of our success-bound programs at the high school. One of the things that we have tried to develop are some courses that will start to interest our students in those strands, those success-bound strands. And we will offer at the high school a human systems course for those incoming ninth graders that will kind of introduce them to a pretty wide scope of biomedical, medical field kinds of things and in the human body systems realm. To that end, we have worked hard with the teacher that's going to be in there to develop that. We've basically written the course from top to bottom. I've been working on getting materials for that over the summer. They will have everything from clay mannequins to build body systems on. They're little skeletons about this big that they build muscles and arteries and nerves. It's really pretty neat. They will do DNA fingerprinting in there. They will do simulated blood typing, simulated urinalysis. They will do their own EKG. I just put all this away for the teacher, their own EKGs. They will do their own blood pressure. They will be able to do everything that they might do in the medical field at a ninth grade level so that they start to really feel, what is this like? So that we can start to spark some of those interests in the medical field and medical careers. The teacher and I, a new teacher to the district, Dana Pencil, she's been with me four or five times over the summer. We're actually making her own textbook. We work with a digital foundation that uses digitized materials to customize textbooks at no cost. So we have built basically a textbook that goes along with that. The students can take it home, works with our Google Classroom environment, and it follows directly her course. So I'm really excited to start this. I think you're going to have, we have about 100 students coming into it this year. My feeling is in about a year or two after that, we may need to find some extra time during the day. It's going to be one of those kinds of courses that students are going to enjoy. So I welcome you to come out and take a look at what we're going to provide for our kids. Thank you.
Any questions for our curriculum department?
Real quick, my daughter who usually gets all As, if she does this, she gets what? All fours? Is that what we're looking at there?
In the primary grades, if a four would be exceeding the grade level standards.
Right.
And doing that. So the target is a three. So where we really want her to be is if she's getting all three, that means she's doing everything she's supposed to be doing in her grade level. A four would be well above that. So we are also, the principals have also been talking about how they adjust their awards because in the past, awards have been based on letter grades. And so there will be some other criteria that they will be using to look at altogether, how they.
So for your math, basically, I'm just looking at the math. You'll add up all those if she's a three in one and a four in another, maybe a two in one, or just take the average of all of them combined and that will be her final score?
Which grade is your daughter going to be in?
Third.
Third grade. Yes, third grade, it will be, there will be no overall grade. So she's not going to get an overall grade in reading. It's going to be looking at each component and she will get a four, three, two, or one in each component. So you'll be able to see very specifically all of her strengths and weaknesses or areas where she's exceeding or something that she needs help on. But no averaging them altogether to get an overall grade.
Okay.
Because the premises of standard-based grading is, this is what I need to learn, so I start practicing it and I continue to practice it until I meet the mark. So once you hit that three, then that's what would be reported out on the report card instead of averaging it. Kind of a quick analogy for you would be like if you are getting ready to run a 5K race. The first time I go out and run three and a half miles, my score might be, or my time might not be real stellar, and I'm pretty sure in my case, it would not be very stellar at all. It would take me a great time to run that distance. But as I continue to practice and practice and practice and get better, when I actually run the race, I would expect that my time would be much better. I want to average my times together to find out what my race score is. I want to know what my best time was that day when I performed. So that's how standard-based grading works.
Well, it looks like once the parents understand this, they're going to get a lot better handle on where their kids are in all their subjects.
Absolutely, and that is the purpose of standard-based grading and removing that averaging of grades because telling you that I got a C in reading as a parent, now what are you going to work on with me at home?
Right.
You really don't have a great deal of detail to know what to work on. But on the standard-based report card, you will see every specific component and it will have a four, three, two, or one based on the quarter when it was taught. So you will be able to tell exactly where my strengths and weaknesses are and what I need to work on.
And this is just in the primary right now?
The four, three, two, one scale with no overall grade is in the primary. Intermediate grades will still have an overall grade, so in that case, we'll be taking some averages to get that overall grade, but they will still, within each standard, get that four, three, two, one mark.
As we transition.
Will all the teachers across the board, I mean, will they have a guideline as to who they give each number to? Because it just seems very arbitrary to me and it's a wide range to be able, I just think for a three, I mean, that could to certain parents be, okay, that's really good, but to other parents, okay, we have a problem. So I just think it seems kind of, like there's a lot of leeway. And are all the teachers going to be on the same page with how they're assigning these numbers?
So for each standard or combinations of standards, there is a mastery scale and the scale has a column for one, a two, a three, and a four. The three column is exactly what the standard expects the student to be, so the language is coming directly from the ODE standards. What the teachers have done then is looked at column two and figured out some of the stepping stones and parts of what gets you to that. So they'll be using those just like rubrics with the students. So it should be very, very clear what, it's not an arbitrary number. I don't give you an assignment and say, oh, today I think you're a two. There's very specific, they're looking for actual skills and specific things a student has to be able to do. If you can do them all, you are a three. If you can't do them all, you're a two. And that scale allows us to even highlight which parts they can or can't do. So very specifically, the student can know exactly which parts they can and can't do and a parent can know exactly which parts they can and can't do.
So it's spelled out pretty well for the teachers?
Yes, and they've helped develop those. And then two other things is those scales will be available on the website for parents to see, so parents also will be able to see exactly what each standard is asking or is expected of their student. And then the other thing is in their teacher-based team meetings, that kind of discussion about what is the standard expecting and how are we going to commonly assess it so that we're all looking for the same thing, that's part of what they will be doing in their TBT meetings. So there should not be any arbitrary or subjectiveness to it. It should be very objective.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thanks. I'm going to give you a quick update. We finished our first year of random drug testing and I think it went very well and I just have some information that I can share on that. And then I'm going to transition over to Mr. Messick, who's going to talk about some upgrades we did on our policies so that we can make them all work together and sync better together. So just a reminder to the audience, we used Great Lakes Biomedical to do our drug testing and we did that in grades seven through 12 in all of our sports, as well as band and show choir, because those are our most active activities. And we want to make sure that the students have a safe environment, as well as our coaches and a drug-free environment for the students. All the dates are randomized. We give rosters of all of our students to the company Biomedical. They pull the names. We don't have anything to do with that, so they select dates, they select the names, they come, they run the whole process for us with trained lab technicians. Mr. Lyons, myself, Mr. Messick, and Mr. Hare, our athletic director, are present. We make sure we supervise the process and the students and we're there to answer questions and we communicate to the parents that the drug testing did happen on that day. If there's a non-negative that day, they'll use a stick in the urine, they'll test it. If it comes out as a non-negative, they'll send it to the lab for further testing. That doesn't necessarily mean at that time that the student tested positive. If it is positive, after it goes to a lab, a physician from that lab will actually contact the parents and have a full conversation with them. They'll verify if the student is on a prescription or if there's any other outlying instances that might have made the test what it was. They can verify prescriptions, they can answer questions, and they have a full dialogue with the parents before they notify us. If it remains non-negative, they never contact us and we don't know anything about the test. If it's a positive, they then will contact me and say, there was a positive test for the student. At that time, I'll contact Mr. Messick, who will call the parent in and begin the conversation and we'll start implementing the policy that's in place. We randomly tested over 250 students this past year. Out of that, we had 11 initial non-negatives, but out of those 11, only four actually became a positive test when it went to the lab. Of those four, two of them were for marijuana, two of those were for nicotine from drilling, and three of those four students with the positive test all met the requirements. They went to some kind of a course, medical course, to abstain from the drug. They met that and complied fully and got early entrance back into their sports program. One student was 18. He was a jeweler, indicated he didn't want to give up the drilling and he chose to maintain the drilling and just dropped out of the program. So we feel like it was a big success. There were several positives that came from it. You know, no parent wants to get that phone call, but I got to tell you that our parents were very well to work with. I think Rob, Mr. Messick, had some wonderful conversations with parents. I think they took it very seriously and engaged in the program the best they could to make sure their kids got the help that they needed. And that was really our intent. It was never meant to be a got you program. It was more to be, can we help our kids, you know, have a system in place to get them out of it and to get help if they are in that situation. We know that it worked in terms of avoiding peer pressure. We had a number of kids that came in. It just so happened, one of the days was after prom. We thought, oh no, and not one kid tested positive that week and student after student that came in said, I didn't do anything this weekend because I was afraid we would get pulled and I'm not going to miss my opportunity to play football or be in the band or whatever their sport or activity is. So it worked very well that way. We did have a couple parents opt their student in. There is a policy where they can choose to opt their student into the program, that they pay for that if that happens. So we did have two parents take advantage of that, so that was a nice feature that we were able to offer and it was successful in both cases. I thought it was nice to see student confidence. Many, many times, kids would, you know, we would bring them in, we would say, who's ready? Pick me, I'm ready. They just raised their hand, they went in. We didn't have a lot of kids that were shy about it or nervous. They really seemed confident, knowing that their name was selected, they were going to go through the process and they didn't care if they were the first people to go through it or not. So I felt really good about seeing that. So if you don't have any questions for me, or if you do, I can answer them. Otherwise, I would like to turn it over to Rob. We already had an athletic code of conduct in place and then we adopted this one last year. We found some nuances this year that kind of collided a little bit, so he and Mr. Hare had worked on shoring those up and making sure they sync better for the athletes and the students. So he's going to talk a little bit about that. Sean?
For a kid who's 18.
Yeah.
And able to buy cigarettes, is that, they're still in that code?
They still are because.
They can't say, I'm an adult, this is legal for me to do this.
Right, and that's what he did. He said, I'm 18, I'm going to continue to do that. Our response is, it's our program, we're still going to provide a safe program for all of our students and our coaches to engage in. So if you're going to engage in our extracurricular activity, you have to abide by our rules. And it was an amicable part, the kid said, I'm good with it. He said, I'm about ready to graduate and I'm just not going to give up drilling. So that's kind of the path that he took. So I wish we could have helped, we could have offered some programming, some different things, but at that point, that was his stance.
Do you see any change in the attitude of students towards us since the beginning of last year?
Well, that's what I was going to talk a little bit about. So a couple things. One was, I talked to my student advisor, we then we talked about it, and also talking to students in my office. The biggest thing was it gave kids the opportunity to say, no, I don't want to lose, you know, I don't want to lose out on this. And, you know, the randomness of it just really kept kids from getting involved in it. Now, we do know a couple of kids didn't, but as the year progressed, we definitely had less and less. So I think the kids were very appreciative of that. Parents, it was amazing how many parents were glad that we chose that, because they didn't know what to do.
Mr. Messick, would you go to the microphone?
Yeah, so that, I think, was one of the biggest things is like, you know, it was never a conflict with the meetings. The parents were more like, thank you for making us aware, you know, what can we do? Do you have any suggestions? And so we had a whole list of resources for them to use. So it was always a positive conversation and a very, you know, what you would think would be a very, I don't know, it'd be pretty tough, you know, for a parent to come in. So with that, we wanted to make sure our athletic code of conduct only extended through the sport and we wanted to go ahead and make that a 365-day code of conduct. So even though, let's say if you're a sophomore and you only played one sport, when your sport was over, then there was, you wouldn't have to go through the drug testing policies, you know, to get the help. And so we worked with that and made sure that we are going to extend it now to its 365 days. So all those kids, so what could happen was is that if a kid wasn't in a sport, but let's say they got tested, it didn't quite, or they'd say something happened outside of the school or whatever, things just didn't marry. So we couldn't give those kids those resources that we promised those parents. So by doing this, we can make sure that all kids can get this stuff. So we anticipated that having to do this and so like I said, it was just kind of naturally happened. It's been very, very positive for us, so a lot of real positive feedback. Do you guys have any questions for me? All right.
In addition to that, we've used the Drug Dogs before. That's been very successful. This year, I think we had two hits that didn't turn out in anything.
Yes.
So there was nothing, nothing in the cars by the time it was all done and said. So we're serious about making sure the environment is drug-free and I think our kids are learning that more and more and they're talking about it and they're seeing our seriousness about it. So I think we're improving that and we're going to continue to do what we can.
And like I said before, the kids are asking for it. One of the, you know, one of the biggest things right now is, and all schools are experiencing this, is the vaping, the juuling and all of that. And kids, you know, they want to see, they don't want that around their school. And so like I said, they'll come to you and say, hey, let's get this to stop because we do do testing for nicotine. And so that's kind of worked out for us. Okay?
Questions?
Last thing I have is, by the time we meet again, school's going to be in session, so it's coming fast to a fast end. Just some quick updates. We are getting a lot of good questions from parents and they're starting to become more engaged with registering their child and doing the things that needs to happen prior to school. So students in grades K through 12 will begin on Monday, August 19th. And if there are any kindergartners out there left that haven't registered, we encourage them to make that contact with Washington or Spring Creek so we can get that process in place. Once we get that information, they start getting better communication from us and they know what's happening prior to school starting, so we want to make sure that those kids are registered. Everything a parent would need to know is at our website and that's at www.pickle.org. They can find all of our Indian Day open house dates and times for each of the schools. Our school fees are listed on there, lowest in the area, $20 for our primary kids up through eighth grade and beyond that, it's $26. It's a very good price. Lunch prices haven't changed again, correct? Again, one of the lowest in the area, so I'm very pleased that we were able to help our parents and students with that. School supplies are very simple. We need a backpack, we want earbuds that fit. A lot of times, parents ask why we want earbuds. They use that for technology and we want the sanitary earbuds used for their child rather than sharing them and passing them on. So they're very cheap to get. We can make sure that they, you know, have their names on them and then they can protect those. And we recommend Ty Conderoga pencils. We don't normally recommend a specific brand, but those are the best ones that really do sharpen. Most other pencils, as you sharpen, they just grind down to nothing and it's just a waste of money. So Ty Conderoga really are the wooden pencils that will last the longest. So those are the only three things we're asking kids to bring. And some parents have asked about the school calendar. That's also on our website, they can click on the link that says "school calendar" and it has every date for the whole year and they'll have everything they need to know. I just want to mention again what Teresa did with the Careful Corners. That's going to be July 29th through August 2nd. Any kid coming into kindergarten, it's a great program. Make sure that they call and get registered for that. They can call the police department and it's a really good idea for them to learn about all the safety features prior to coming into kindergarten. So that's my report on that.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Hey, if not, superintendent's agenda.
Okay, we'd like to recommend the board to approve the attached list of donations for the Pickle City School District and we have several from Unity National Bank. We have a Lift-a-thon program for our football program. Rosemary and Paul Gutman donated some money to our band. And finally, the Music Warehouse has closed up their work. They've turned over all their assets to the Pickle City School District. Mr. Westfall has turned over the idea to, they do like a boot camp now. It's a lot less intense, it requires less time for the students to be tied, you know, less intense, it requires less time for the students to be tied, you know, to the program as vacations and other sports was kind of interfering with that. So, they still do a great job, but they had a lot of resources that they used for over the years, so they're turning that over to the district, and we want to thank them for that. Recommend board approval for the attached Pickle City School District free and reduced lunch policy for the 1920 school year. Recommend board approval of the attached Food Service Department annual compliance report. Recommend board approval of the attached classified staff handbook for the 1920 school year. Mr. Lyons puts that together, and it's just general information for our staff so that they know how to do just basic, basic things as a staff member. Recommend board approval of the addition of the college credit plus options for instruction to the healthcare that you heard Mr. Bloom talk about. Recommend the board approval of the enrollment of Yannis Flassier of Farcois, France, at Pickle High School for the 1920 school year as a foreign exchange student through the ASSE WH International Student Program. Recommend board approval of the new standards-based report card and standards-based four-point mastery scale for the grades K through three at Spring Creek Primary School, Washington Primary School for the 1920 school year. Recommend board approval of the new standards-based report card for grades four through six at Pickle Central Intermediate School for the 1920 school year. Then, we're going to recommend board approval of the new K through three interim progress reports for Spring Creek Primary and Washington Primary School for the 1920 school year. And recommend board approval of the new grade four through six interim progress reports for Pickle Central Intermediate for the 1920 school year. Recommend board approval of the attached Interscholastic Athletic Handbook that you heard Mr. Messick talk about. And recommend board approval of the attached Athletic Code of Conduct. Again, we just shored those up and synced them to our other policy. And that's it.
Does anybody have any questions on any of those items? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda? Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, personnel.
Thank you. Nothing specific to point out on the personnel agenda, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the process that we've gone through this summer, it's been busy with several resignations and hiring in the process, and the principals have done a great job of getting that process taken care of. It's significant from creating a profile for each position that opens up, including teachers in the interview process, vetting all the candidates, and then getting ultimately the right, the right person for the position in. So, you know, they've worked hard to make that all happen over the last few months, and at this point, we're at three positions that we have left that have been vacated very recently. One's a gifted intervention specialist, one is an art teacher, and then an ESL specialist. Two of those positions are county positions that we're filling. For two of those three, we hope to be finished with those by early next week, and then wrap the rest, the final position up by the end of next week if all goes as planned. So, that's where we are right now. Like I said, it's been busy, but we're very excited about the new folks that are coming on board, and Scott's done several different teaching sessions with new people, almost every day, you can hear them working back there somewhere, and we're excited about the new folks coming on board. So, outside of that, it'll be a shorter personnel agenda next month.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lyons? Hey, if not, do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda as has been presented to us? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Lyons. And old business, we have-
Yep, just would like to recommend the board to approve the second read and final approval of the revisions to update the Neola Board Policy 6320. That just had to do with, we had to add our food service program onto the bidding process, so there are specific guidelines we have to follow when we put items out for bid, and our old policy did not include food service, and we wanted to make sure we updated that, so that's all that's doing.
Okay, so, we need to, do we have a motion to approve this update?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any other questions? If not, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and new business. And these are both pretty well-standard?
Yes. Do you want me to read them, or do you want to?
The first one is the traditional thing that we've been passing to allow Dwayne Knight to enter into contracts with the ESCs, including the Montgomery County and Miami County ESCs, we discussed earlier, those contracts with those places. And then, the second item on there is the shared services agreement with the Career Center. We passed this first, and then we send this off to the Career Center for approval for sharing services with our food service director, Jennifer Garland, and those are just the two things.
Okay.
We can do them separately, though, if you want.
Okay, yeah, let's do them separately. Have a motion for the various agreements for the secretary, treasurer, and superintendent.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Hey, motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to this next one with the shared service agreement, do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I imagine a lot of people don't realize that we have a contract with Montgomery County as well to service some of our students.
Yeah.
Yeah, Montgomery County provides very specific things that Miami County doesn't, specifically with speech services, physical therapy services, vision services, which is one of the big areas that we've had growth, is the vision area. So, there's just certain components that even require more sophisticated people, and they've got a unit of people who can supervise those.
All right. And I have nothing on hearing of the public on non-agenda items. Our next meeting is August 22nd at 6:00 PM here, and school will have started by then.
Yeah.
And if there's nothing else to bring before the board tonight, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.[1753.82]